You are watching Access Lapeur County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is September seventeenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access Lapeur County dot org.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, September seventeenth, Michigan City City Council meeting. Please silence all electronic devices. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silent prayer.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the nation of republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Ms. Nyle, what's the roll call, please?
Mr. Beatry, Mr. Coulter.
Here.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Prozabulinski.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have eight present and one attached.
Yeah, for the record, Mr. Beatry had notified me that he wasn't going to be at tonight's meeting, so he's excused. Everyone got a copy of the minutes from the September third meeting? Any corrections? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilman Dabney. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved. Reports of any standing committees? Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Michigan City City Finance Committee met on today, September seventeen, twenty twenty four. Myself, Dr. Cora was in attendance. Mr. Beatry was absent, excused absence, but we did have a quorum. We discussed the Michigan City Riverboat Claims Doctor for September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Riverboat zero dollars. Riverboat E F T two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Boy Development Fund number two five zero four, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, total claims three hundred seventy thousand dollars, and those were for the Brick Streets of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the city events of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Also, the City of Michigan City twenty twenty four Riverboat Fund Statement of Cash Position Fiscal Year to Date, September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, ending balance three million, two hundred twelve dollars, twelve thousand, five dollars, twenty one cents. Also.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Also, it was addressed that a City Finance Committee meeting of the Michigan City Common Council has been called by Finance Committee Chair Tracy Tillman for Thursday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty four, at five P M. in the Council Chamber, City Hall, one hundred East Michigan Boulevard. And this is to go over and to discuss the twenty twenty five budget, and this is for department heads for any questions and answers to be discussed during that time.
Okay, just to comment about that workshop, because that'll probably be the last workshop before the budget's approved, correct?
We're on our first reading tonight. Our second reading will be held on October first. And so any discussions, if anything needs to be discussed or any changes regarding the monetary, the dollar amounts, that could be done also during that time as well. And if there are no changes to the twenty twenty five budget, then the Finance Committee can make a determination or recommendation to accept the budget as presented by the mayor.
Okay, I guess, and my comment is, I would encourage all the council members that want to come to come to ask questions. The department heads will be there. You can ask department heads why they're spending this money on this particular item. And you get to know the budget process a little bit more, especially for the new council members. Give you a little insight on what goes on with this process. So I would greatly encourage all council members, but especially the new council members, to be there if you can. Any reports? Oh, yeah, let's see, claims. Yeah, we have to vote on claims. Yeah. Is there a motion to vote on claims, Councilman Davy?
Most approved.
Yep, most approved.
Okay, motion to approve seconded by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The claims are approved. Reports from boards and commissions, boards and commissions, there are none. Reports of special or select committees. And this evening, I'm going to say a few words about the Arts Commission. I'm the liaison to the Michigan City Arts Commission. They're doing a fantastic job, in my opinion. And just to tell you a few things about what the Arts Committee is doing in Michigan City. Last Friday night, they had, and they started, this was the initial, what's called Arts in the Park. And they're taking the arts into the park. And where we were at last Friday night for a couple of hours is on the corner of Ohio Street and Anne Street. It was a little triangular, I'm going to call it a pocket park, that's sitting right there with a nice piece of art sitting on it. And we had approximately fifty people at the event. There was food, hot dogs, you know, refreshments, all that. And it was a good night, and it's just to get the folks in the neighborhood out into the neighborhood, let them come down and see the artwork. And then there was a little presentation put on by the Arts Committee to let the citizens know what the Arts Committee is doing around town. And then also at Gardena Playground, if you haven't noticed, or if you travel that way, or if that's your neighborhood, there has been an artist that has gone out there and done artwork on the restroom building out there, and he's also painted refuse containers throughout the park. And that's really decorated and brought some life to that park. And right now, at Pullman Field on the skate park, there was an artist there, the same individual that did Gardena Playground is at Pullman Field now, and he's doing the skate park, the ramps, the sides of the ramps, and the different items that are out there. I stopped, he's been out there now a week. I stopped out there Sunday, spoke to him for a little bit, and it really, really looks nice. It brings a lot of spirit and flavor to that side of town, and especially that's, I'm going to call it the main thoroughfare coming in on the west side of Michigan City that really makes that park look nice. And just a little background about the Arts Committee, and I've been the liaison, I think, six years on that committee. But anyway, since they first started to where we're at today, they have purchased twenty nine pieces of art that are going throughout Michigan City, and we see them all over now, and they spent approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in doing that, beautifying the city, beautifying the neighborhoods. And I think just it brings a whole lot of spirit and a whole lot of flavor to the different parts of town. So hats off to the Arts Committee. They do a fantastic job and keep up the good work. At this time, reports from the mayor or any other city officers and departments? Okay, Ms. Nyle, are there any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Ms. Nyle, any communications?
No communication, correspondence received.
And our first resolution by title only, Ms. Nyle?
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the Fire Department and the Cumulative Capital Development Fund four four oh two for the year twenty twenty four in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Ms. Lee.
And would the author have anything she'd like to add?
Yes, so this is essentially moving funds that the Fire Department already has from one account to the other, but we also have Fire Chief here who will explain a little more.
Yeah, anybody got any questions? Any?
Does anyone have any questions for the chief?
Of why we're doing this or anything like that? What's the purpose of the move? Okay, back in July, we had a, a training officer was involved in a car accident, you know, wrecked, totaled the vehicle out, it was a city issued pickup truck. And so when it got totaled out, we got the check. The, the, the account that the money would have to come from to pay for the new truck doesn't have enough in it. So we're wanting to move it from one account to another. We have the money, we're not asking for money. We just want to move it from one account to the other, and being that the accounts that it's going to and from makes it a major move, so we got to come and ask in a resolution. That's basically it. We have the money, we just need to move it to be able to use it.
Okay, so I have, I have a question, chief. So we're going to move money from one account to the other. Now, the money that's in the clothing and safety equipment.
Yes.
Okay, the seventeen thousand. I mean, did we get, we got insurance money for this vehicle, right?
We did.
But it didn't cover the whole?
The, the, I was, I was talking to the secretary today, so I'm still learning some things about the budget. I guess the particular account that it's going to be going to, which falls under capital outlay in here, it'll be under machinery and equipment, motor equipment. Apparently, that was not really a funded account this year, something along those lines, or there wasn't that much in it, because we wasn't looking at buying a vehicle. And then when we did, like, when they replaced the chief's vehicle from the wreck that, where it got totaled last year, we had to shift some money around then. Just happened to be the accounts we're moving it from now. So she explained to me that it wasn't a, a, pretty much a funded account. Like I said, there wasn't much in it. So the amount that we got for the totaled vehicle, we're still about seventeen thousand dollars short for that, about seventeen thousand, two hundred something. So we're going to, we'd like to move seventeen for, just to have a few extra, few extra dollars, just in case something comes up on that. So.
Okay, and on, and on that other, the, the vehicle that got totaled.
Yes.
So when you trade that in, or whatever you do with the totaled vehicle, whoever takes it, do we take all the safety equipment off of it? Do we keep all that?
We'll strip all of our stuff off of it.
Okay.
Whenever they, whenever they decide to take it, right now, it's sitting out in our training tower on Hitchcock, just out of the way, so it's not taking up any real space. So whenever they decide to take it, or whatever they want to do with it, we'll strip everything. I think everything's actually already stripped off of it. So.
Okay. All right, thank you. Dr. Cora?
Yeah, the question I had was, the seventeen thousand, four hundred that is being taken out of the clothing and safety equipment, will there be any money left in that account after you remove this for, if you need anything for the remaining months of this year?
Yeah, looking at it right now, we'll have, right now, that's, that's more for clothing and safety. But we're pretty good right now on that. That's why we want to take it from there. We're, we're pretty set for the rest of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution?
Hello, boards, Scott Malintour, kind of place. My question would be, instead of taking the seventeen thousand from that's allocated for other goods, why don't we finance the balance of the seventeen thousand dollars and get a five hundred dollar a month payment for a few years to conserve the cash for the purposes it was allocated for? That'd be my comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. First, I want to wish all the members of the Michigan City Fire Department luck in their promotional testing Saturday. All the members of the fire missions, I have to be there all day. I'd like to see an additional appropriation. I know their contract's up. I'd like to, you know, all the municipal, all the non-fire police municipal employees, since January two thousand twenty two, this is something the Mayor Perry put in. They all get a bonus paid vacation day during the month of their birthday. And I'd like to extend to that to both the members of the Fire Department and the Fire Chief and the two deputy.
Mr. Kalavich.
You're only talking on this.
Yeah, if I may, yeah, that's not geranium to the subject matter right now. Okay, anyone else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Anyone else from the public? Public comment is closed. Any council comments?
Motion to.
Councilwoman Lee?
Motion to approve.
Second, okay. Motion to approve by Councilwoman Lee and seconded by Councilman Dabney on the vote, Ms. Nyle.
Dr. Cora.
Pardon? Oh, oh, you, Joe, you made a note, you made a motion? Okay, I'm sorry. I was, I saw Councilman Dabney's, I know, but I saw Councilman Dabney's light on. Okay, so it was Councilman Joe Nelson that seconded the motion.
Dr.
And then the vote.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Prozabulinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nyle. Our second ordinance on first reading this evening by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, ordinance or resolution for appropriation and tax rates, and this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
And would the sponsor have anything that she'd like to add at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President. Only just that this is put on as for the first reading and that that will be completed upon the approval of the twenty twenty five budget.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tillman. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none? Anyone from the council like to comment on this ordinance? Any council comments? Okay, we will hold this ordinance over for a second reading at our next council meeting. And our third ordinance on first reading this evening, Ms. Nyle, by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, and an ordinance setting salaries and wages for appointed officials and employees of the City of Michigan City, Indiana, for the calendar year two thousand twenty five, and this is introduced by Ms. Tillman also.
And would the author have anything she'd like to add at this time?
No.
No? Okay. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none? Any council comments? No council comments, this ordinance will be held over?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, name and address, sir, for the record.
My name is Bill McPherson. I work for the Transit Department. My address is two fifteen North Ashland Avenue. I just had a question, because it talked about the twenty twenty five ordinance. I mean, the, for the calendar year, for the salaries, the salaries that y'all are going to set, are they going to start in twenty twenty five or? Because I kind of heard something a little different. That's the reason why I'm asking the question.
I'm not sure where or how that information was obtained, but as of right now, this is what is, is being presented to the City Finance Committee. And that is why we will be having workshops. If there's any changes forthcoming, then those things will be addressed during that time. But as of right now, this is what has been presented to us by the city mayor and the administration.
Okay, okay, no, I just wanted to be sure.
And it will be effective January first of twenty twenty five.
I just, I just wanted to be sure, because like I said, I heard something a little different, but I just wanted to be sure as far as how the council, you know, receives this.
Sir, if you could, could you speak a little louder into the microphone, please?
I just, I just want to be sure, make sure you know, how the, how the, how the council sets on this.
And, and I'm glad that you did ask that question, and just for future reference, what, if you or any other city employee or department head have questions, again, come Thursday at five o'clock to the budget workshop, and we can ask those questions, and feel free, my email and my phone number, reach out to me, and we can have that conversation as well.
Okay, because of the way that the transit works, and I can only speak for the transit, I can't speak for other departments, that's going to be kind of hard for us to be able to come, just so that we can listen to what's going on. And by me being the union, union rep, I definitely would like to be there, but I know that I'm not going to get off until five thirty, a quarter to six, so it's going to be kind of hard.
That'll probably still be going by then. If you can, I'll try to, if these do get wrapped up a little bit sooner than later, I will try to hold out so that, or put you to the last in regards to any Q and As that we may have for your department.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Going back to, are there any council comments on this ordinance? Any council comments? Little council comments, this ordinance will be held over to our next meeting. And Ms. Nyle, our next ordinance on first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance setting the annual salary for the mayor, and this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
And would the author like to add anything at this time?
I have none at this time. Thank you.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Yes, Scott Malintour, kind of place. My comment for this and the next two will be, we're doing these by title only, I think would be important for the people to understand what are these salaries being proposed and what, if any, increase over the existing salary is there? Just saying, an ordinance saying the annual salary for the mayor doesn't tell the people anything. And my comments will be the same for the next two ordinances. What's the annual salary for the city clerk? What's the, what's the salary for the common council members? Just reading the title doesn't tell the people anything.
Hey, thank you, sir.
Oh, yes, Mr. President, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. If you'd let me, I'd like to read a statute. This is really important on whether we should determine whether we're going to give the mayor, you know, give the mayor a big fat raise. And you, I know Councilman Davy and Tillman, you've heard me read this before, each time Mayor Perry was looking to get his raise. And this is the powers and duties of the mayor, and this doesn't only apply to Mayor Angie or the mayor of Michigan City, this applies to every mayor of the city of second class and every mayor of the third class across the entire state of Indiana. The powers and duties, the executive shell and the executive of all the cities is, is the mayor. It's under subsection one, this is a big one. And first, the ordinance of the city and the statutes of the state. Number two, provide a statement of the finances and general condition of the city to the city legislative body at least once a year. That's why the mayor's got delivers to the state of the city address. I asked Mayor Angie in January, she came on coffee, when you deliver the state of the city, one hundred days in office. Number three, provide any information regarding city affairs that the legislative body requests. Recommend in writing, this is number four, recommend in writing to the legislative body actions that the executive considers proper. Number five, call special meetings to the legislative body when necessary, supervise subordinate officers. And these are two really big ones, these are two, where Mayor Perry missed on. Number seven, ensure efficient government of the city. Number seven, fill vacancies in city offices when required. When Mayor Angie came on, she filled all the vacancies that Mayor Perry had left on open, didn't fill.
Mr. Kalavich.
By arms deeds and contacts of the city and licenses, by the city, that why we should give mayor a, a raise. Approve invito ordinance and resolutions in the legislative body under Indian Code thirty six dash four dash one five. And I definitely think the mayor Angie deserves a big fat raise, and on that, we need to lift Mayor Angie high and put her upon a pedestal for all the world to see, where I'm going to say, we are M C, we are M C, we are M C. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pardon? No, I didn't hear what, I didn't hear what you said.
Can I just say, can I speak for a second? Okay.
Okay, anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Okay, public comment is over. Council comment, Councilman Davy?
Yeah, I just wanted to express, that was the point, the information about the salaries will come out. Of course, we're going to have budget hearings, that would be on Thursday, but I just wanted to address that the mayor's salary, the salary for city clerk, and for council members, as of the way the budget was presented, there were no raises in the budget. So the, the salaries, I'm not going to go back and read them, but there were no increases in the budget, and we will talk about this as Councilwoman Tillman said, that will also be presented in the, in the budget hearings. So I just wanted to put a cap on some of the, you know, the, the talk that's going on right now, just to answer a couple of questions and move forward from it.
Councilwoman Tillman? You want to comment on something?
I'm just going to read the section one in regards to an ordinance setting the annual salary for the mayor. In section one, it does state that the mayor of the city of Michigan City shall pay, shall be paid an annual salary of ninety three thousand, two hundred eighty dollars. Three thousand, five hundred eighty seven dollars, sixty nine cents biweekly from the general fund beginning January first, twenty twenty five. The general fund is to be reimbursed ten thousand dollars from the sanitary district operating funds and ten thousand dollars from the Department of Water Works to offset the salary of the mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Cora.
Mr. President, I have a question. Since I'm new, is this how it has always been, like, the total amount like last year, and then ten thousand coming from the sanitary district and ten thousand coming from the water works?
Yes.
Is that how it has always been last year? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other council comments? Having none, this ordinance will be held over till our next meeting. But I would, just to let everybody know that, and as Councilman Davy said, that there will be no raises for elected officials this year, but the mayor of Michigan City makes ninety three thousand, two hundred eighty dollars. And Ms. Nyle, our next ordinance on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance setting the annual salary for the city clerk, and this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
And would the author have, like, to add anything at this time?
Um, I'd just like to resection one of that ordinance, which states that the city clerk of the City of Michigan City shall be paid an annual salary of seventy six thousand, two hundred fifty two dollars, seventy three cents, two thousand, nine hundred thirty two dollars, eighty cents biweekly from the general fund beginning January first, twenty twenty five. The general fund is to be reimbursed one thousand dollars from the sanitary district operating fund to offset the salary of the city clerk.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Hello, Scott Malintour, kind of place. I'd like to thank both Councilwoman Tillman and Councilman Davy and President Prozabulinski for addressing my concern on the previous ordinance. I think that's a, a good policy when we're talking about salaries. On a side note, I also attended the budget, something with the budget with the mayor, where she went over our budget. I think her proposed budget has reduced this year's budget by over six million dollars for next year, which is an amazing, amazing work, I believe. So she's reduced this year's proposed budget, or this year's budget of seventy three million dollars, down to, I believe, the sixty seven million dollar range, which is a great amount of work, a great reduction. I would point out, unfortunately, even with that, the city is still in deficit a little less than two million dollars. So the belt tightening that everyone is going to experience is appreciated by this taxpayer. Thank you for your hard work.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none? Any other council comments? Anybody have comments? Okay. We will hold this ordinance over for second reading at our next council meeting. And that leads us, we are done with the uh, no, we got one more there. I know, what I do with it? Uh, the most important one. Yeah. Okay, uh Ms. Nylob, our next ordinance on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance setting the annual salaries for the common council members, and this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
And would the author like to add anything at this time?
Yes, I'd like to read, thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to read section one. Each member of the common council of the city of Michigan City shall be paid an annual salary of fifteen thousand four hundred twenty-six dollars sixteen cents, five hundred ninety-three dollars thirty-one cents biweekly from the general fund beginning January first of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance?
Uh yes, Tommy Kalovic thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, I'm just saying the same thing I told the previous council. I don't feel any of you council members should really get any more than what you're getting now. I think your payout would be a portion to the other uh cities, councils across the state of Indiana, that around thirty thousand residents, basically, that's the city of the third class, which is the city under thirty-four thousand people, uh that's pretty much what your payout would be. Now, I do feel that you you all you council members should be 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 offered uh health insurance, if you so desire. I know Councilman Dabney, he first came on, he pushed on it. I know he took a lot of heat for that, but I think that would entice a lot of younger count people to defile or to be the council member. Like, I'm I'm so pleased as punch, we got three council members now that are a lot much younger than we are. This is just my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone else from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none, any council comments? Councilman Dabney?
Yes, uh just quickly, I appreciate that sentiment, Tommy, about the 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 common council salaries. Uh Gary, they pay their council members about forty-five thousand, and I know East Chicago is close to fifty, but we are, you know, obviously, you know, keeping our salaries down. We've done it over the years, time to time, or whatever, my ninth year now, and we've had very incremental raises, and we've kept that expense down for the city. So hopefully that is appreciated. Thank you.
And just one comment, uh yeah, we make fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. And I'm fine with that. I don't expect to get paid forty thousand dollars. This isn't a city of the first class or second class in the state of Indiana of ninety thousand people like uh Fort Wayne or East Chicago or Gary. You know, this is Michigan City, thirty-two thousand people, and you know, thirty-one percent of the people I believe in Michigan City li- live below the uh the the poverty level. And it would be, I think, rather embarrassing for me to show my face up and down the street if I'm up here trying to promote ten percent, fifteen percent raises on on an annual basis, so that's where I stand on on that particular uh comment. Uh any other council comments? Having none, this ordinance will be held over till our next meeting. And uh let's see, our next ordinance, Ms. Nylob, by title only on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance adopting and establishing designated outdoor refreshment areas in the city of Michigan City, Indiana, and creating Article Six and Chapter twenty-six of the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Mr. Coulter, Ms. Lee, and Mr. Beatry.
Yeah, and I just want to make a uh note that this profo- this proposed ordinance was tabled at the September third meeting until the September seventeenth meeting, and it's been out and Councilman has been out doing work, putting this together, and here we are this evening, so Councilman Coulter, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh first of all, I'd like to make a motion for amendment by substitution with the uh ordinance as it was presented to the city council.
Second.
Ms. Nylob on the boat?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Przewlinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Dr. Cora?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, and I just, I just want to make a comment that amendment by substitution, what that means is that all the amendments that are being introduced in this ordinance, instead of voting on each one of them individually, it's all packaged together, and we vote on it, and it's done in that manner for efficiency. Okay, Councilman?
Yeah, so um over the last few weeks, since we first introduced the Dora ordinance, which, to go back a second, the Dora ordinance essentially allows participating businesses inside a designated area to sell um open containers of alcohol to be enjoyed on uh outside the restaurant within that designated area. Um so Mr. White is pulling up the map that we are um is one of the key amendments. Uh so right now, we've got up the logo for the Dora. Um originally, it didn't have the bird on it, but then I saw a bird on the beach, and I thought we need more seagulls in this town. Uh so thank you, Drew. So this is the updated map. It includes the downtown as well as the lakefront within a single Dora ordinance. Um you can barely see that the bridge is included, but you can walk between the two. Um so Mr. The next slide, please. And then one of the key things that we updated too was that we adjusted it so that you couldn't walk on Lake Shore Drive with an open container. Um that was something that a lot of people had expressed uh concern with. So this moves it so that the legal boundary ends a hundred feet north of the street. So you're still allowed to drink on the beach with that container, and if anybody's walking from where they're selling the alcohol down all the way to Stop Thirteen, and that that's been silly, but um yeah, so this just continues to show that the Dora includes the lakefront and the downtown and the Lake Franklin Street Bridge. And that is the bulk of the amendments that we have created.
Pardon, what'd you say?
That's the bulk of the amendments that were created.
Okay. Okay.
That's all I got right now.
Okay. Any other authors have anything want to add? Councilwoman Lee? Okay, anyone from the public? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance?
Uh yes, Tommy Kalovic thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, I just want to reiterate what we said when we had our workshop. You know, we do have ordinance that prohibit every bit of, I remember when those went on, and if I recall, those were old Willie Millsap ordinance, I thought they were really good orders that we had, but the state says it's okay, so, you know, but we go ahead, but my my family, you know, we keep giving the store away on too many things. I think there ought to be more strings attached. I think every every vendor that's gonna be participating, I'd pay like a thousand dollar participant a a year. And also, they for every patron that takes a cup out or gets a refill, I said there ought to be a dollar surcharge. We can take all that revenue, we can pass along to all the municipal municipal employees across the board in the form of a big fat raise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public which should speak on this ordinance?
Good evening, Dakota Euler seven eighteen Emma Street. Uh my only concern was the um time on that, was that amended at all? Uh if if you would offer a question and answer?
Yeah, um traditionally we don't, but um the one of the amendments was to crew allow businesses to do it during any of their business hours essentially, so that the staff doesn't have to like watch a clock and then um worry about one more thing. So we've got it starting at ten AM and going till midnight, and most restaurants aren't open at ten AM, nor are they open at midnight in that era area. Almost all of them close at nine.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public which should speak on this? Anyone else from the public which should speak on this? Council comments, Councilwoman Tillman?
Um I'd like to make a motion, a request to have um third reading held tonight.
There's been a motion for third reading tonight? There's been a motion made for third meeting, third reading tonight? Is there a second?
I was, it's I seconded, uh but, Mr. President, I also had a question.
Well, there's, the motion's been made, you second it, now we have to vote on the uh on the motion. Ms. Nylob?
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Przewlinski?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
And Ms. Lee?
Aye.
We have six in favor and two opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nylob.
Mr. President, the question I had was, when it was tabled uh at the last meeting, do we have to have a motion to take it off the table, or is it?
No, 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 that was explained to us by the uh attorney prior to the meeting, now we didn't have to do that. Yep. Okay, Ms. Nylob, uh go ahead and read uh by title only on third rating on this ordinance?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, an ordinance adopting and establishing designated outdoor refreshment areas in the city of Michigan City, Indiana, creating Article Six and Chapter twenty-six of the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Mr. Coulter, Ms. Lee, and Mr. Beatry.
And do the do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time?
Not at this time.
Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance?
Hello, Scott Mullin to our kind of place. Uh going to third rating feels sort of uh like we're moving really fast. Especially since this has been tabled for about a month, it feels like, I don't know what the support is in town. We're a semi-conservative town, and online, a lot of the comments were very negative towards this. I support the Dora personally. I think it's an evolution in our more tourism-based economy, and I think responsible adults should be able to stroll stroll with a drink if they so choose. I'm hesitant that we go from second and third readings so quickly on a matter that's sort of been tabled. I'm not sure how the citizens of citizens of Michigan City will feel about that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none, council comments? Councilman Dabney?
Yes, I just wanted to express ba- basically my nay vote, is the fact that we had amendments that were, you know, put into the the ordinance, and I would have liked to have had a chance or for some of the people who had concerns to be able to see those amendments. Um I'm in my ninth year here, and I remember once getting burned, um because we made some amendments on second reading, going right over to third, without the people being able to see those amendments, and they could be very simple amendments here. Um but I would have just liked to, you know, for them to be able to see them, um you know, just to um calm any fears of of whatever may be happening. Um so that was the only, that was the reason why I um voted nay to push it to third reading, because I would have liked to have seen our people who have interest in it to see uh the amendments going forward.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mullenour?
Yeah, uh I'd like to explain my vote also. After attending the AIM workshop, which was for all elected officials after um we were seated on January first, most municipalities only have two readings on ordinances, and that's it. So Michigan City is sort of the um anomaly um throughout the state, so I just want to point that out, okay? Thank you.
Any other council comments? I have a a comment about this, and I know that this has been on a, been on the drawing board for a month now, and at first, it it came back to the city council, and we got it, well, I got mine yesterday, uh and read through it a couple of times. I had questions to ask, didn't get the opportunity to do that, uh and what I want to do is that be able to have third reading, to have the third reading, so that if somebody from the public wants to come, after they get a hold of this, if they wanted to come and talk, they would, we, they would have the opportunity to come, and that's what that podium is there for. You know, and whether we only have two readings, Michigan City has three readings, which I think is great, because it gives people plenty of time to air out any differences they may have on the laws that are passed by this body. And, you know, and now, and now we're gonna vote whether we want this or not. And with that being done, I just, I just think that we we were shortchanging the public by having second and third reading this evening. Do I mean, there's no sense in rushing this through. We're not doing it this year. It's gonna start next spring. So we got six months to plan it out. So what was the issue on waiting another two weeks? And I know that council members can vote the way they want to, I'm just expressing why I thought there's this need, you know, to to rush uh to get this going without having really a fair uh discussion. So apparently, you know, everybody, everybody thinks it's okay. Personally, I have a couple of questions that I'd like to get answered. So number one, on the beach, in the beach area, they open containers, open alcohol containers are not allowed down on the beach. But now you're gonna be able to come from a Dora, and who knows, and I don't know if cups are gonna be changing every week, or whatever the situation's gonna be, to change the identification of what weekend it is. But say I go to the beach, and I pick up a Dora cup, never been downtown to any business to get it, didn't walk out of there with two sixteen-ounce beers out of a tavern, but I picked this cup up down on the beach, so I figured, hey, you know what? I'm gonna keep this cup all summer, because you know what that allows me to do? I can come down here, okay, I'll take it home, clean a cup out, wash it out. I can come down here and drink all day long and just walk up and down the beach with this Dora cup in my hand, and nobody can say a thing to me. Correct? Or correct me if I'm wrong.
You are allowed to drink on the beach.
Pardon?
Uh you are allowed to drink on the beach. It completely allowed. You're not allowed to use glass containers when you drink on the beach.
Okay.
That's the policy.
All right.
Okay.
But, you know, anywhere else, okay, anywhere else, you know, you can, you can have a a Dora cup and just, you know, walk, walk around, and I don't know, I just, and then and then the size, the size of the cups coming out of the the tavern, does everybody know what the size of the beer cups are gonna be coming out of taverns? No. But we all read the ordinance, we all know what it says, so I can come out of a tavern with two sixty-ounce beers in my hand and walk around downtown, go to the next place, get another two sixty-ounce beers, and walk around town, down to the beach. You know, sixty-ounce beers, to me, is gonna get you loaded up pretty fast. It does me anyway, now that now that you can hold your uh, you know, your alcohol pretty well. And I just think that, you know, there was, there needs to be room there uh, you know, for discussion to uh, you know, maybe we need to, you know, take a step back. And like I said, we got six months. We got six months to take a look at this. What I think the council should do to be prudent about this, and I know we already had one workshop, but I think we should table this again. We should have a workshop and just bring out the points that people have. We got plenty of time, okay? And let's make sure that whatever questions people have, they get answered instead of rushing it through. Because I know what I would think if I was somebody sitting there watching this on TV going, well, I don't even know what this is about. It was tabled for a month, and boom, here it is, and we're going second, third reading. It was tabled for a month, and boom, here it is, and we're going second, third reading right through, and yeah, I just, I don't have a good feeling about it. Okay, Councilman Cora?
Mr. President, after listening to the feedback, um, I feel it, it, yeah, it is prudent to, uh, wait and, um, have everybody digest, uh, some of the, uh, modifications that have been made, uh, to the ordinance and, um, since it's not gonna be implemented till next year. So I, I think it's reasonable to give some time for people to read and reflect on it and see if they have any feedback, so I agree with that.
Okay, but in order to do that, in order to do that, we have to table it again. Okay, so.
I make a motion to table.
I second.
Motion to table by Dr. Cora, seconded by Councilwoman Mullenhour.
Point, point of order. I, I just have a question for our attorney. Um, since the motion was made to go to third reading and approved, can now a table come over the top of that and stop third reading?
It can be tabled on third reading. Um, the, the first question is whether or not it's just being tabled or whether it's being tabled to a specific date. Um, going back to your question, uh, Dr. Cora, about bringing it off the table, because it was tabled to a specific date, it did need to be removed from the table, it was automatically on the agenda for that date. Um, so the question is whether or not the motion is to table it in general or table it, uh, until a specific date. Because it's on third reading, can it be tabled on third reading? Yes, it can be tabled on third reading. However, if any amendments are made between, uh, the second, the approval on second reading and third reading, those will also have to be, uh, passed individually. I don't believe that you can do an amendment by substitution on third reading. I think you have to.
But I think you can do a you can make amendments on third reading.
You can make amendments on third reading, that, that's what I'm saying. You have to do each particular amendment.
Yeah.
Um,
Okay.
So it couldn't be like tonight where it was amendment by substitution. It would make it a lot more complex.
Mr. President, I want to modify my mo- motion. I want to, um, to get this, uh, tabled till the first meeting next month.
Okay.
Don't they have to say that they can make amendments? They want to?
Time months, uh, uh, basically, I, I'm, I'm gonna just make a motion to table and, um, we'll decide when we're gonna bring it back.
Okay, so table it indefinitely right now, then we can decide when we wanna sit down and meet. 'Cause we got budget hearings going on and stuff like that, so, yeah, let's not overload the plate.
And I second that. I second that.
Yeah, you second the motion?
Before, okay, I'm sorry, before the fact, I apologize. Uh, the motion needs to include the ability to amend on third reading.
Yes.
And, and the motion will, uh, include the ability to amend it on third reading.
Okay, sorry, thank you very much. So there's been a motion, and it's a, a motion by Councilman Cora, seconded by Councilwoman Mullenhour, Ms. Nyland on the vote?
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. President Lasky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Coulter?
Nay.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
And Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
We have five in favor and three.
Missed me.
Pardon?
Who'd I miss?
Councilman Dabney did not get asked.
That's all right. Must be invisible with the blue suit coat.
Yes, or no?
Aye.
Now we have six in favor and two opposed. It's tabled until the next meeting, and you can.
No, it's tabled indefinitely.
Modified it.
Yeah, indefinitely. Dr. Cora made that motion.
I didn't hear that.
Okay, ready to move on?